States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Dale, are there any questions? All in favor, I opposed abstain motion carried. And we need to administer the oath of office. If you raise your right hand and repeat from or read from here to here, please.
Okay, I Kerry John do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of the state of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education Vice President according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And a good sign, please.
Thank you. Congratulations. Hey, we need a motion to go into executive executive session for the purpose of personnel. Motion by Kerry, second by Sue. Are there any questions? All in favor, I opposed abstain motion carried. So we have our recognitions and presentations. So we have our student presentation for GIS.
What Dr. Hayes, let me kick it off with an intro. There we go. Sorry. So we have Dr. Hayes. He's one of our newer faculty members is concentration and right now is in GIS, which is geographic information systems. And he also teaches earth science for us. So he has a presentation tonight. Well, actually his students do, which is even better probably than a presentation by Dr. Hayes. But yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, so I have with me Matthew and Mitchell Schnalfer, who have worked hard on their projects and I wanted to have them an opportunity for you guys to see what they did. It's really cool and looking forward to next year. So I don't know which one we want to do. Oh, so you need to get onto your zoom. All right. So Matt is going to present his presentation first.
Hi, I'm Matt. So my project was for the Wesleyan Watermark Church around the East Aurora Hamburg area. So what they wanted me to do was they wanted me to take a list of all other congregants and geoprocess all of their addresses and the church addresses. So what you see up on the screen right now is all of the addresses that they gave me. We had people from California, Florida, all over the place, even a few in Canada.
They don't attend on a weekly basis, but they felt compelled to give their name.
So these are just the congregants in Erie County. And this is the different church campuses. So to split up the different church campuses, I use a program that made these these and polygons. So what this did was it took the distance between each campus and it split it up in half and created a line. So in each of these polygons, we can assume that the people in here go to that church. It's not like guaranteed that they go to the church because sometimes people want to go farther just because they like that church more than the other church, but it's a higher probability that they go to the church that is in their these and polygon. So now that we have the these and polygon, I could assign each these and polygon, the name of the church, and then split up the different congregants to match the these and polygon. So I could color code the congregants. After that, I wanted to try to find out how far away these people were from their church. So I use these distant rings. So the dark green is five miles away from their church. Lighter green is 10, yellow is 15, and red is 20. So here we see just the East Aurora Village and the churches that are along the East Aurora Main Road. So now we get to the whole point of this project was to bring people in this church closer together. Um, to do that, I use something that Dr. Hayes and I called Know Your Three. What we did was we use a function called generate near table. What it did is it took an address and it found the three closest people and addresses to that person and spit them out on the table here. So we see the first name. And then we can see the person that is closest and their address. The second person that is closest and their address and the third person that is closest and their address. Now I've got an example of this up here, right here. So Isabella Brennan, Lucas J. Donna and Colleen Parter are the three closest people to Isla's son. Now for this, I also have the distance rings, but I also color coded the congregants so that they would match the distance ring that they're in so that people could tell which distance ring they were in easier. Another thing that we found was that in our data set, we had multiple addresses repeating with the same last name. So what we did was we combined all of those into one record, but we made sure that we had a count of how many records we had. So we could have a household count like this.
Thank you, Matt. This is good. Matt was unable to present this to the church. I went in his stead last Tuesday. I didn't do as good a job as as him, but the church was very appreciative of this just because it was like they had never seen all the people on a on a map at one time. So this was a very useful thing. And this could be extended to sports teams to say, okay, we want to figure out our carpooling. Who's closest to, you know, where are all the people on our on our lacrosse team? And who are the three closest ones? So we could arrange evening rides, things like that to the games or just getting tea at like class levels to know each other a little better. So and now I want to turn it over to. Oh, you're gonna do it on that machine too?
Well, trying to figure out, does anybody have the Zoom meeting ID?
It was shoot. Yo, E. Let's call it up. Just the you just want the code or the?
I got it.
Okay, great.
The passcode?
Yeah, were you looking for the passcode?
Hello, everybody. I'm Mitchell Schnalfer. And my project is for the fire departments in Cataragus County. No, that's I had to make a couple of layers. Here we go. So the goal of this project was to determine if the fire departments in Cataragus County were serving the most amount of people the most effectively. So the first step, of course, would be to put in the Cataragus County Fire Department into the map because we can't have a map that about the fire departments without the fire departments. So here is every single fire department inside Cataragus County or that serves Cataragus County. But that doesn't really tell us much. It doesn't tell us how much it serves, how far it serves, how many people it serves. So the first, the next step was to add our population address points. And that just doesn't help at all. It just clogs up the map. So something that I did, which is literally literally easier on the eyes. I told the computer to analyze those points and make what's called a heat map. So heat map takes all the points in a certain area and calculates how dense each area is with data. And so you can see the brighter colors like Olean. That means that there's more population density. So more people live in Olean than any of the blue areas. So that tells us that kind of tells us how many people a fire department may serve. Doesn't really tell us the area that it serves or how far it takes, how long it takes to get there. So that's when I implemented something called drive time. So drive time analysis is when you take a point and you tell the computer to find all the roads, all the speed limits, all the stop signs, every single obstruction, every railroad, every river and say, okay, taking all these things into account, how long does it take to get here? How long does it take to get here? And so if you can see on the map here, let me turn off the population density. On the green here is five minutes. So anywhere from zero to five minutes it takes to get anywhere in this green area. Then the yellow is anywhere from five to 10 minutes and the red is anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes. So preferably, we want the most people to be able to be served in the quickest amount of time. So that's why zero to five is green. So if we turn on our population density, see that there's some spots, for example, down here and um, around here that we can see that there's some denser population, but isn't being served adequately by a fire department. And that's where the point of this project comes in. So I've chosen three locations and to put new fire departments for underserved areas. So the first one would be in Onaville. So I noticed that around here, there was a few hotspots that weren't being adequately served or were over 15 minutes of drive time to from the nearest fire department. And so if we turn on the address points, we can get a little bit better of an idea of how many people are there. So we can see there's quite a few people out in Onaville that aren't being served adequately by any nearby fire department. So this green pen here is where I would suggest the new fire department. So if we look at the the drive time from this area to see if it would cover everything that it would need to, we can see that um in a little bit. We can see that Onaville is now in the green. So anywhere from here all the way up to here is within five minutes of drive time. And within five to 10 minutes of drive time and 10 to 15 minutes of drive time. So it is much closer and faster for this new fire department to get to those underserved populations. Next, we have over in Napoli. There is a population hotspot right here. So if we turn off the drive time for a little bit to get a better look, we can see that this hotspot here and here, especially right in here, is almost as dense as Little Valley or Randall or East Randall. And so this area, if we turn back on the drive time, we can see that it's it's over 10 minutes for a fire department to get to homes there. So I'd suggest a new fire department right here. And you may be wondering, well, why not just put it right in the middle of the population density? Well, if we zoom in a little bit, we can see that there's a meandering river. And so the reason we'd have it here is because it's easy access over the river and down in Napoli, but also very fast access down Pinder Valley Road and into the development here. So if you look at the drive time from here, we can see that now all of this is within five minutes. Everything up here is within five minutes. The development is within five minutes. And Napoli is within five minutes. And finally, we have Guanda. Now Guanda has a fire department, but it's not in Cataragus County, but it does serve Cataragus County. Now, it may look like Guanda is adequately served because most of the population is within the five to 10 five zero five minute drive time. But because Guanda has such a dense population to be served by only one fire department that is outside of Cataragus County might be a little bit impractical. So I would suggest another fire department right here, right at the edge of the five five minute drive time, the other fire department. But if we turn on the drive time for this fire department, it would still, it would give double coverage to the hotspot in Guanda and it would cover the roads leading down into farmland.
Presentation, guys. Thanks for bringing it in. I know it was really neat. So it's in, it's really exciting to see what you guys are doing and taking the technology and building it out. So keep up the good work and come back anytime and share your presentations because we really, we really love to see them. So great job. And next we are going to move on to our school safety and reopening.
Thank you. We do have students on campus for a large portion of each day, specifically Monday through Thursday for academics, enrichment, adventure camp, as well as athletics. So the practices that we're currently following are the same procedures for students that were in place in the spring, which basically means students and staff that are performing what I'm going to call sort of school duties. So that's teaching and learning and athletics. For those students and staff members, masks are to be worn anytime they are inside the school building. Students who are participating in events outside the school building and can maintain a social distance do not need to wear masks. For our adults, if you are a vaccinated adult that is engaged in activities not in common areas, such as the hallway, and those activities would be something like professional development sessions or teachers that are working in their room or employees working in an office, vaccinated adults are not required to wear masks. At this time, there's a lot of questions about what things are going to look like at the fall. And I'm simply going to kick it down the road and give the official statement that we are not prepared to speculate on expectations for the fall and masks. So there has been some guidance that has come out most recently and some speculation, but with it only being six weeks away, we're still a little bit up in the air as far as what's going to happen with masks and are waiting for guidance from New York State. But at this point in time, for our students on campus, it's pretty much the same as it was in the spring.
I can add a little bit of clarity to that. I was on a about a 90 minute conference call today with the commissioner and the Association of Small City School Districts. The commissioner also echoed what Mark had just said is that we are awaiting guidance from the executive branch of the Department of Health, but the commissioner and the state ed leadership advised that we should be planning on full return of students on campus once the 2122 school year starts for the districts. In comparison to this time last year, we had no guidance about the start of school until July 26th last year. So we're still on target for that late announcement about what September will look like, but the commissioner indicated we should be planning for a full return to students. And whether or not the mask mandate is lifted, she did not know whether or not the three foot social distancing is lifted. She also did not know. And that they too are awaiting guidance from the executive and the Department of Health at the state level, and they are actively lobbying the state to reopen schools.
Thanks. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? All right, then we'll move on to communications. Title six, Jess. Hi, how are you?
Am I live? Okay, thank you. So I have a quick title six communication. We are having a meeting next Wednesday, the 28th in this very particular room from six to seven. Everyone's invited. We're going to be discussing some of the reorganization and trying to get our group going and ready for the fall and also just brainstorming and trying to figure out future funding goals and really trying to recruit more people. So hopefully, hopefully people will join us here. It's spacious. Lots of social distancing can be had. So please feel free to visit us next Wednesday, six to seven right here. That's all I got.
Thanks, Jess. Okay. And then do we have any other public communications? Okay, just as a reminder to for any other organizations or individuals or groups. If you do come to the board meeting, please be prepared to state your full name and address for the recording for our minutes. The your comments should be addressed to myself, the Board of Education President. All public comments should be directly related to any item that is currently under board discussion. Comments should not involve personalities. Recognized speakers must be bona fide residents of the district. The Board of Education by a majority vote can waive the residency requirements for speakers for addressing the board, but we should know about it in advance. And speakers should also understand that the board will respond to any of the inquiries, but we will might not take action at this at the meeting in which they speak. So just so everybody hears that for, but we do welcome everybody to come. Just make sure, especially because of the Zoom situation, that we follow the protocols listed. So with that, you said there was nobody, Janet. Okay, then we'll move on to the central office message. So Karen, would you, do you have anything for us?
Sure, just an update on food services. When you're moving along, we'll have the new hire at the next board meeting. Um, we've reached out to the nation farm, waiting for some response to find out what they can provide for us as far as fruits and vegetables and potentially bison for next year. Stay tuned for the menu for opening picnics because I have food services. It's going to be cooking. Um, and I please don't give me anything else to do because I can't handle it. That's all.
Thanks, Karen. Mark?
Good night. Thank you very much.
Move on to the Board of Education message. Maggie, you want to start us off?
And I think everyone who's involved in the summer programming that's that's going on. It's always nice to have students on campus and engaged with the schools during the summer. And there's just such a wide variety of programming that we're offering. I know community members are really appreciative. Kids are really excited. I think especially given the past year that we've had, it's nice for kids to to retain those connections with their classmates and with with teachers and staff if they so choose. So I just want to thank, you know, everyone for that. And that's it for right now.
I would also like to commend the teaching and the summer school program we have this year. I think it was needed and and I think the kids are taking advantage of it. And in the long run, it's going to help with what we missed this last year.
You, Dale?
This is our opportunity to to share an op ed message to everybody. Please, if you're not vaccinated, get vaccinated. Nationwide, we are seeing a spike in infections with the COVID virus. And if you have the opportunity and are eligible, please take that. And if you have the opportunity and are eligible, please take the opportu- opportunity to get vaccinated. Um, I also want to say thanks to the Salma district. Um, this past weekend, um, I celebrated with, with my classmates our 40th plus one since we missed, missed, missed our last uh, last year's reunion due to COVID. But we did a tour of the, the school building and of the Vets Park. And some of my classmates haven't been back since, since they graduated 41 years ago. And they were duly impressed with all the improvements that we've done here at the school. Um, and they were, you know, exceptionally, you know, enthusiastic about our steam, steam edition. But they also shared some positive messages about, about our studio that we have. And of course, Vets Park. So um, I want to thank Rich, um, Barry Smith, Eric DePaso, you know, who helped out in the tours and Levi, that he put a slideshow up on the Jumbotron for my classmates. So thank you very much.
Yeah, first I'd like to congratulate Dale on his reelection to the board. I'd like to congratulate Teresa Ray as being nominated for board president. I'd like to thank all my colleagues on the board, uh, each and every one of you for showing your support for nominating me and approving me for vice president of the board. Um, even though I wasn't here, I still appreciate the support. I think, I think that goes a long way to show my commitment to this district and our kids here. Um, maybe one day I'll aspire to be in Teresa's big chair. Who knows? Um, but thank you to everybody, you know, thank you. And you know, I just wanted to say that my commitment to this district never changes. Um, it's all about the kids. It's all about a community. It's all about making the school better. So I'm here. I'm here for as long as you guys will have me. So thank you. Um, I guess I wanted to say it's kind of exciting time of the year. You know, we're, we're done with one year, but we're looking forward to the next. And to me, that's kind of exciting thinking about what we have coming. You know, I know we got a little bit of uh, other concerns to worry about with COVID. You know, our reopening policies and things like that, but it's still exciting to think about what we have coming. Um, so I'm looking forward to getting closer to the opening day of school. I know a lot of people don't want to hear school again right now, especially our younger population. But it's coming. It's coming. Um, you know, we have some in the building and it's just, this is just a fact of life. We have it coming here in another month or so, and I'm excited for it. But um, I also did want to um, thank a couple of behind the scenes folks for helping me personally this summer. Uh, I have my girls lacrosse team playing over at Vets Park and without the help of Mr. Levi Spoonie-Barger, who turns the lights on for me at the drop of a hat and gets, gets it illuminated for us. Um, to Chad Bartosik and Rich Podkowski for helping us out with the field and uh, scheduling and everything else that goes on without, you know, without these guys behind the scenes, it wouldn't be possible to have a girls program. And just FYI, I had over 40 girls sign up this summer for uh, our Oheo Storm team, which basically more than tripled my previous numbers for uh, for girls playing. I've only been able to field a varsity team this year. I have elementary, a modified and a varsity team. So that's, that's pretty exciting. And it just goes to show that this lacrosse is big in our community and now it's spread out to all of the young girls in the Community for Girls Lacrosse. So, and thank you to everybody uh, for making this happen. And also Karen, thank you for uh, getting us on the right track as well. I hope you, trust you got the insurance and everything else. So we're, we're good, we're good to go. Um, I guess that's all I got tonight. I'll, I'll digress from there.
I just like to say I've heard nothing but positive feedback on the summer programmings. Everybody's raving about them. So great job to everybody that's involved. And uh, again, I'd just like to congratulate Carrie for being the vice president. Meg did a great job when she was VP, but she decided she's got to leave us. So it's great to have Carrie step into that role and um, I really don't have much more than that to say tonight because I'm getting ready for vacation. So going to be gone for 10 days, but so in my stead, I'm sure Carrie can fill in for any, any necessary items. Right, Bob? Okay. All right. So with that, we can move to the superintendent message.
Just very quickly, uh, the work on the code of conduct continues. We had some conversations today and there will be a meeting early next week and then a follow-up meeting hopefully scheduled for Friday morning. And our hope is to have uh, some information for the board's consideration on August 3rd. Um, our policy work is continuing slowly. We have met with both OCS and there are some additional policies on tonight's agenda and the draft policy on um, relationships and staffing uh, that you have as a draft. We'll bring that forward for public review probably on August 3rd. Uh, and uh, just as a reminder on August 3rd, in addition to um, a conversation hopefully about the code of conduct, we'll have a presentation on the hiring process, which has been uh, going on in great excitement and energy this past three or four months. We'll have an update on construction and we will also recognize two longtime clerical employees who are retiring on September 30th. So that'll be on August 3rd. So it'll be a pretty robust agenda. Um, and that's all I have for tonight.
Then with that, we need to move on to the consent agenda. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Motion by Dale, second by Sue. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a few.
Okay.
Karen, get your mic ready. Uh, the cafeteria profit and loss, can you just explain to us uh, the showing of a loss?
Yeah, um, as we had previously discussed, it's the cost of using the fund balance for the purchase of the Prospect Cafeteria equipment and the Seneca multipurpose cafeteria equipment. Because we had such a large fund balance, the state was yelling at us. And um, we were able to use that money. It actually was six, 633,000, I think it was, um, off the top of my head to purchase the equipment for both of the cafeterias. So that's why it shows as a loss because we paid for it all in that one time versus across the last three or four years.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next question. Um, out of our 19 different bank accounts here, there's, there's many that are unnamed. Um, just for an example, I'm looking at A206, um, A208, A209, uh, there's just no bank associated with them. Am I to assume that all of those in the yellow are the same bank or because I see CCB, Five Star Key Bank? What's? I'm just curious.
Yeah. So the cash and bank, the account numbers refer to which bank they're actually at. The, or not which bank, but which account. So the As are all general funds. The blue, the C is the school lunch fund. F is all our federal funds or grants. The H funds are all different capital, um, capital project fundings that we have. And the Ts are our trusted agency accounts. The Te is our scholarship account and then the X is all the student activity accounts.
Hmm. Well, I mean, do we have any other banks that aren't listed here? Like I said, there's a couple of cones that don't have a bank listed to them. So we have Five Star Key Bank, CCB. Um, are there other banks that aren't listed?
No, this is all the accounts that we have.
Okay. And then on the revenue status report, uh, bottom line on it, grand totals all the way across. Um, can you just explain to us where we are budget-wise and the revenue earned, unearned revenue? Um, revised budget numbers, just all the bottom line stuff.
Yeah. So the original budget number is where we originally approved that last year plus um, carryforwards from last year for um, uh, purchase orders that were encumbered but not paid for um, by the end of the year. Any adjustments or any monies coming in that we were unaware of at the original start of the year? And then uh, those two totaled together are the revised budget. The revenue earned is the actual amount of monies that have come into the district. And then the unearned revenue is what we're still due, so to speak.
Okay, now that is still due, that could be some state aid or something else that's due to us?
Yep. State aid, it could be like, especially for the grant programs because the program will end, say on June 30th, and then we file our final cost reports to them by the end of July and then we'll get the money in August. So on the June 30th report, it'll still show as outstanding for those two months.
Okay. All right. And then our last one appropriations report, same thing, bottom line. Can you just go over budget adjustments, adjusted budget, expense and cupboard available?
Yep, same thing. It's pretty much the same thing as revenues. The original budget is what was approved. Adjustments were for encumbrances that were not, um, we didn't have invoices for them yet, which totals the adjusted budget. And then the expenses is the total expenditures to date. Anything that we've actually sent and checked out the door for. Encumbered is all the cost of all the um, encumbrances, which are any of the purchase orders that are issued. So if there's services that we've ordered, say we already have a contract for $14,000 for somebody um, and they've only expensed $2,000 of that, the other 12,000 will be in the encumbered column. And the reason the encumbered column usually shows a lot is because it also includes outstanding payroll. If somebody makes $50,000 and it's, you know, July 4th, they've only been paid maybe $500. So the rest of their pay is also included in that encumbered column.
Hmm.
So if we were to pay everything up to date, um, you know, cut everything off at that point, that's where we would be. So um, on this report at the very bottom on page 24 of 24, it shows three and a half million dollars available. That means that that money is sitting, has been budgeted, but has not been utilized.
And so basically that would be a carryover or what happens to that money?
Federal grant, we don't get it. We basically it's, it's use it or lose it for some of them. For others, it will be a carryforward. For general fund, it goes into our fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And we have a motion by Dale, second by Sue. All in favor? I opposed abstain, motion carried. We have no old business. We have no new business. Item 11 is our personnel consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda under motion by Carrie, second by Meg. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed abstain, motion carried. And now we can introduce some staff.
There are no staff members being appointed tonight that are on the call.
Okay. Then uh, we'll go on to item D, which is our APR lead administrators for teachers and required STA personnel. So we need a motion to approve the revised APR lead administrators. Motion by Meg. Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed abstain, motion carried. And then our settlement agreement, we need a motion to approve the settlement agreement. Motion by Dale. Second by Sue. Are there any questions on this? All in favor? I opposed abstain, motion carried. And item 12 is just our board information and reports. So we have our first reading of policy 5410, 5411, 5412, 13, 5511. And our upcoming events, we have a personnel committee meeting on the 29th. And then our next BOE meeting will be uh, the third. And don't forget, uh, please come to the 28th for uh, Title VI. Right, six to seven, you said? Six to seven. It's not on this, but please, everybody come and uh, join the group. Um, and with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Sue. Second by Carrie. All in favor? I opposed abstain, motion carried. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.